Good evening. I have 5:30, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is April 13th. It is 5:30 PM, and this is the meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. Before we get started, I want to take care of a couple of housekeeping items. One is just a reminder to commissioners that you could speak directly into the mic. That sound will be much better for the listeners. Also, I want to comment on the call the public. We have two call the public periods, one at the beginning of the meeting, one towards the end. If you participate in call the public, if you would like to, you're on Zoom, please use the Zoom raise your hand feature or just wave and you'll be called upon. If you're here publicly, just wave your hand at us and we'll, and I'll call on you here. Cindy Katnick will be calling on the Zoom participants. Alls we ask is that you provide your name and address before speaking, and you'll have up to three minutes to address the board. And just as a reminder, the, this is your opportunity as a citizen to present information you feel is important for the attention of the board. This is not intended to be a two-way conversation. With all those housekeeping items taken care of, please join me in a moment of silent reflection before we get going. Thank you. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Naka Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner Lawrence is absent. Commissioner Reader. Commissioner Helserman.
I am present from Handy Township, Livingston County, Michigan. I am absent for medical reasons.
Commissioner Grick.
Here.
Commissioners Ajax.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
And Commissioner Plank.
Here.
The forum is present.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is correspondence. This evening, we have six pieces of correspondence, one from Berrion County, two from Sheboygan County, one from Genesee County, one from Hillsdale County, and one from Tuscola County. I am looking for a motion to receive the correspondence and place on file. Motion Zajak.
Support Plank.
Motion by Zajak, support by Plank. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence is absent. Commissioner Reader. Commissioner Naka Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Grick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I just want to do a little sound check. Is this, how is the sound from the commissioners? Are we speaking into the mic well enough? Thank you. Um, we have our first item number six on the agenda is called the public. This is the first of two called the publics. Anybody wishing to address the board tonight, if you would, if you're on Zoom, use the raise your hand function or wave if you're here at the meeting room. Just wave your hand and I'll call on you. We'll start with the meeting room first. Is there anybody that wishes to address the order commissioners? Yes, go ahead. There's a mic up here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Jessica Hamlin. Um, I'm actually. Okay, um, I'm actually going to be saying, speaking tonight on something that I didn't originally plan. But since we are getting so much hate from our public, that we are non-complying, diseased criminals, I'm sorry, let me add that in. I decided that I would take a direct quote sourced from Kristin Megan, a certified legal expert in the field of industrial hygiene and exposure science, which includes masks and respirators and infection control. Kristin Megan has 18 years' experience. It is evident here in the state of Michigan, we have an increased surge, yet we have the highest restrictions in the country. Some of those restrictions, we are doing everything wrong, including, we're told to stay indoors. We're told to not be around people. We are doing everything opposite. The state is not allowing the hierarchy of controls, which is based on exposure science, which there are industrial hygienists that explain that the hierarchy of controls says that masks should always be used as a last resort, and that masks are actually not able to stop a virus. It is a huge lie and fraud when doctors say that the virons, the small microbes, can only attach to large droplets. They're saying that it doesn't matter if this virus is aerosolized because they don't move by themselves, that they need to attach to large droplets. That is fake. There is a monkey study that shows monkeys wearing masks who are infected with COVID-19 that are just talking, 80% of the air sampled outside of the mask showed that they spread COVID-19 through the aerosolized breaths. The problem is that masks are further increasing the spread, one through self-contamination and another suit through cross-contamination. Because throughout the history of mask use, if you touch your mask just one time, you must change it out. Nobody is doing that. Also, there is so much bacteria inside of masks because no one is trained in how to properly put on and take off masks. Every single study that even the CDC is claiming that masks work are absolutely not considered RCTs, which are randomized controlled tests. What they do is take these masks, they put them in a laboratory and try to see if they can stop this virus. The problem is that you cannot do this in a laboratory setting. They must be real-world scenarios. That is why the monkey study was quoted. Also, the efficiency
You have 15 seconds, Miss.
of the mask completely changes from when it's on a mannequin, say, versus a real human because face shape, facial hair, jaw structures, and other things change the fit of these masks, and they are not tight-fitting.
Your time is up.
Thank you. I sent you all earlier, one of the sources that I had mentioned in this.
Thank you very much for participating tonight. Anybody else?
Hi, Stephanie Krieg, 7732 Partridge Hole Drive. And yes, there is a difference between masks and respirators, but the government is claiming this is source control. But there's a huge study where back in February, a bunch of doctors said, can we please address the aerosol aspect? This is primarily spreading through aerosols, and we know that masks cannot stop aerosols. When I say that it makes things worse, this is what I mean. When you are wearing a mask and you cough, yes, it can stop large droplets. But the pressure of the mask is now what would be a three to six-foot trajectory of the aerosols is now being pushed up to 18 to 20 feet. These masks, when they are not chained out and they are soiled, then they have restricted breathing, like in kids in our schools, inhaling your own carbon dioxide and impelling your proper gas exchanges. For children, pediatricians have come out and showed that repetitive decrease in oxygen can impact the development of their brain, development of their brain, because it blocks proper development through the frontal lobe. Anyone paying attention? We need to look into engineering controls. We need to bypass the energy restrictions just up to the HVAC systems to a small wind tunnel. And the argument that doctors wear them all day, they get more oxygen because the hospitals know they restrict your oxygen. Does Howell High School provide more oxygen to these kids? No, they don't. The more air exchanges per hour and per minute is what can lift this aerosol virus out of the breathing zone and can keep up high and filter it out in the natural environment. If you can't afford that, a lot of people can't, which is not that expensive. We need to open doors and windows and utilize free cross-ventilation and dilution ventilation. We need to be looking at engineering and the administrative controls, not masks. It's usual, it's a false sense of protection. And when people think masks work, they get closer, and when talking about aerosolization, it makes the six, eight feet rule useless, and they pull their masks down when they want to scream at little kids in stores. Kroger, Meyer, the post office, I had someone come up to me today, and they told me that their daughter, a two-year-old, got screamed at. She felt so threatened, she has to wear her mask on her two-year-old everywhere. This is Livingston County. I don't know how you guys are sleeping at night and how you don't know this goes on, but this is going on, and it's serious, and it's going to escalate. If you don't put a stop to it, please, take your oath of office seriously. You took an oath to uphold our freedoms. We are asking that you do that, just that. We don't need anything else. We don't need any more laws. We don't need any more rules. All we need is for you to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Lori Leach. I am from Brighton Township. I am here to ask you guys to do exactly what the eight other counties in northern Michigan that are doing, that are passing and releasing them from having to comply with the governor and state agencies and the executive orders. I am 52-years-old. I've lived here all my life, and I do not need another mother, okay? Mine just recently passed away. I don't need someone to tell me how to raise my kid. I have a 30-year-old and a 12-year-old. I'm ashamed and sickened by any of you taking away our rights. We have our God-given rights. You guys don't have an authority to tell us to wear masks. That is on us, not you. If you want to wear one, go ahead. Honestly, if you want to wear one, I don't care. Do not push it on our kids. I have over 318 pictures of, in Livingston County, of pictures of kids with faces broken out. Over 118 of the teachers that are my age, who I went to school with at Heartland, were having acne problems and facial problems, going to the dermatologist from wearing masks because you breathe in, it gets wet, it's suck on them. I don't care if they're 12-years-old or six-years-old. You guys need to start listening and understanding. We're adults. We can think for ourselves. We don't need you guys to make them decisions for us, but taking our rights away. And any one of you that say you're a Republican, which I'm a patriot, and say that you know dang well, we want our rights, and you guys are for our rights, and you're not showing it by telling us we have to wear these masks, that's against it. You guys aren't doing your jobs. Even if you're a Democrat, my best friend's a Democrat, but she's not in the Democrat Party now because they're taking away of all of our rights. I'm asking you guys, quit adding stuff to the list. We're old enough to take care of ourselves. I'm responsible. I cannot believe you guys are thinking that the mask should be mandatory or even to go on what the governor says. There's no science behind it. If there was, why can't you guys prove it? Why can't you show it? And Wes, I love you. I think you're a good man, and I like what you believe in and stand for. Can't say that for my own Kate Lawrence right now, but sorry, that's my opinion. And I really hopefully pray to God that you guys understand that's not your right to make us wear masks. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for joining us. Anybody else in the room here?
My name is Jacqueline Pike, 11803 Fowler Street in Howell. First, I will say thank you for not adjourning your meeting, like the cowards did at both school boards yesterday. I will read a small excerpt of what I had written yesterday at the school board because I think it still applies. Our concern, and what we have a major problem with right now, is a system that forces healthy children to wear masks to attend schools that also threaten parents with fines and/or imprisonment under the truancy section of the Michigan compulsory education law, and that is taken strictly straight off the website of Michigan. The mandates and policies that force healthy children to wear masks are based in fear and not science, and as several sources cited, they're unconstitutional. They're a violation of our children's rights. Parents have control over, and we are responsible for the health of our own child. Just the same as is the parent's right to choose to vaccinate their child, it is also the right of the parents to choose whether or not our children should wear a mask. The government, the state, the city, and the school has no right to make those decisions for us or our children. By requiring, forcing, by forcing our children to wear masks for extended periods of time, you are increasing the risks not only of health and psychological issues. You are teaching them to live in fear. You are encouraging an atmosphere of bullying. You're promoting false propaganda, and yes, I have evidence of that as well. You are showing our children that they have no voice, that they have no control over their own bodies. As elected officials, you are the voice of the people. You were put into power by us. You are our voice. I voted for some of you on this staff, and it sickens me to see what you guys are doing, not even listening to us. Your job is to listen to what we as parents and we as citizens have to say, and then make your decisions. These mandates are not laws, and as by such, they are not enforceable. You not only have the power, but you also have the responsibility to do something about them. You need to unmask our children. You need to unmask our city. You need to unmask our county. I will also remind you that we are watching you. We are taking notes, and we will remember that the next time that reelections come up. I urge you to do the right thing for our citizens and for our children, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the meeting room wish to address the board?
How's it going, everybody? I'm Mike Hamlin at 2323 Pleasant Ridge here in Howell. And I wanted to start off thanking you all for at least hearing what we have to say. We weren't treated with the same respect yesterday with our school board. Multiple parents, we've all reached out via email, phone call, letters, zero response from our superintendent, from anybody. And then we walk in the door yesterday, and we're treated like criminals. In fact, the whole reason why we got all upset last night was because they were smiling and laughing and giggling under their mask because they adjourned their meeting just because we weren't wearing our masks. Our masks need to come off these kids. This is the stupidest thing that we've ever come across. We have plenty of science that backs up that data. We need to adopt the resolutions that the eight other counties have done in Michigan. Look at what's going on in Florida. Look at what's going on in Texas, Mississippi, Alabama. There's no panic. Me and my wife are going to Florida in 10 days. Why? Because we just want to enjoy 10 days of freedom, not being able to, not having the government telling us what to do. Everywhere we go, we want less government control. We just want to be free. That's all we want. We want our kids to live in a free world. You know, the state of Michigan lost 62,000 kids last year from the public schools to homeschooling and private schools. You know how much money that adds up to be for 62,000 kids? That's roughly $503 million in grants. Imagine what that number will be next year and the following year, because I know we are all considering homeschooling our kids next year, along with thousands of others just in Livingston County, just in Livingston County. This is a conservative county. We are not Seattle. We are not Portland. We want our freedom. We don't want to be told what to do. As long as we are not harming others, we are worried about our own health. You guys need to stop telling everybody not worry about your own health, but instead, hey, we've got to worry about the health of everybody else. No, you worry about your own health. Eat healthy. Exercise. Take vitamins. If you're sick, stay home. It's common sense, just like we all do. But there are a lot of people nowadays that seem to lack the common sense. Where it's gone, I don't know. So I'm going to end that with that note, and I want to say thank you to at least hearing what we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, anybody wish to address the board on Zoom?
Yes. Judy Dobbinmeyer.
Yes, my name is Judy Dobbinmeyer, and I live at 4490 Lakeshore Court, Brighton, Michigan, 48116. I really can't hear what the people in the room are saying, but I believe they are advocating not to wear masks. And I just want to remind you that no one has the right to infect another person with a dread disease. There's a lot of talk about how we should be personally responsible for our own health. If you are infecting me by not wearing a mask, I cannot be personally responsible. You do not have a right to infect me. Your mask protects me. My mask protects you. My mask alone will not provide enough protection if you are infected and are wearing, are not wearing a mask. That's, that's the science. Children's brains are not being damaged by wearing masks. And I just think this is very sad. I hear all the time about what a Christian county this is, how we're a God-fearing Christian nation. Whatever happened to do unto others as you would have them do unto you? I just, I can't believe what I'm hearing, the disregard for other people's safety. And it's just very sad, and I'm sorry. I'm sorry to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbinmeyer. Anybody else, Cindy? Do we still have Cindy?
Yes, I'm so sorry. Jessica, you are up.
Hi, my name is Jessica Bearfield. I am at 11256 Country Lane, Pinkney. Um, so funny enough, I actually have a study from a doctor. Judy just said children's brains are not shrinking. Is Judy a doctor? Because Dr. Marguerite Bryson, MD, PhD, she's a neurological and pharmacology doctor. She did a study that actually said that wearing of a mask does in fact shrink our brain and that the effects of that are irreversible once it happens. And I would be happy to send the board that study if they want it. Secondly, the CDC says that if you and I both have masks on, and we are within six feet of one another for longer than 15 minutes, and one of us has COVID, we are both still considered infected. So if our masks work and we both had them on, why would we be wearing them? And then I also want to read some other information from a mask study that I would be happy to send you guys. In this meta-analysis, face masks were found to have no detectable effect against transmission of viral infections. It found compared to no masks, there was no reduction of influenza-like illnesses, cases, or influenza for masks in general populations, nor in healthcare workers. Additionally, this study found that in 2019, there were 2,862 participants that showed that both N95 respirators and surgical masks resulted in no significant difference in the incidence of laboratory-confirmed influenza. 2016 meta-analysis found that both randomized controlled trials and observational studies of N95 respirators and surgical masks used by healthcare workers did not show benefit against transmission of acute respiratory infections. It was also found that acute respiratory infection transmission may have occurred via contamination of the respiratory protective equipment due to storage, improper storage, and the reuse of masks and respirators throughout the workday. Masks have been assumed to be effective in obstructing forward travel of viral particles, considering those positioned next to, behind a mask wearer. There have been further transmission of virus-laden fluid particles from masked individuals than from unmasked individuals. I could go on and on. I would be happy to send this all to you. There is endless amounts of links to scientific proof that these masks absolutely do not work. Not only do they not work, but they cause further infection and are what are probably causing the COVID-19. If you listen to some of these doctors, you're more apt to get sick from the actual mask. I have scientific studies on that. So far, Gretchen Whitmer hasn't shown us any scientific studies that they prove. And lastly, this is abuse to our children. Children are not allowed to drink water without being sent to the opposite room, telling them that they are going to be killing their friends by teachers. Children are being put in tight masks that rip at their ears because their masks fall down. You guys have a chance to help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Kristin Sotterbrook.
Hi, I'm Kristin, 1126 Galloway Lane in Howell. Much of what I would have said, a lot of these people have already quoted, like from Kristin Megan, an actual PPE specialist, which I know that nobody else here is that. What I want to say first and foremost is what the Howell School Board did last night was unf, I just, I'm astonished. This needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed. There were parents there crying, wanting their three minutes to speak, to tell them how they feel about their children wearing a mask all day, all day. Second, I will be happy to send you pictures of the child's mask when they're done with the day, soaking wet, dirty, filthy. It's a bacterial infection nightmare. Thirdly, I am a Howell resident, city resident, who is sick. I'm sick. I have seven autoimmune diseases, and sorry, Judy, but you are not responsible for my health. None of you are responsible for my health. I'm responsible for my health. I take supplements. Has the health, has the county health board told anybody, get your zinc in, get your vitamin D in, get your C in? No. Had they put out, guys, eat healthy during this. Don't let the virus attach onto all the sugar and the crap that you eat. No, what we did was we shut down restaurants, and we let everybody line up at the fast food places and eat garbage. But what we did do is we muted our children. We cannot stand for this any longer. I will not tell them in 20 years that I did not fight for them. I will not. My health is not anybody else's responsibility, and your health is not mine, okay? So we need to unmask our children. Homeschooling is looking a lot better for most of us right now because we will not be, our children's masks will not be taken from them and put on tight masks that rip at their ears, like Jessica said, okay? This has gotten so far out of control, and I really hope that what happened at the school board last night and what they did by just standing up and leaving and not letting any of us speak is addressed. And again, I will be sending you pictures of the masks that we have seen the kids.
Seconds.
Um, and we, we won't stop. This, this has got to end. We have got, we cannot let this spiral out of control, which it already is, but we cannot let it spiral further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy M. Cindy?
Sorry about that. I just have a very short statement. 39 children were admitted into the hospital.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cindy McNeves at 3140 Shehan Road, Pinkney, Michigan. My statement is 39 children got admitted to the hospital yesterday with severe COVID illness. That's it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Wave your hand. Commissioner Naka Gary, I did not see any other hands raised.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close the call to the public, reminding everybody that there's a second opportunity later in the meeting. Item number seven on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes. One dated March 22nd, another dated March 29th, another dated April 7th. I'm looking for a motion to approve all three sets of minutes. Support Zajak. Motion by Griffith, support by Zajak. And questions, comments, corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence is absent. Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Naka Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Grick.
Yes.
And Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda are tabled items from previous meetings. We have no tabled items, so we'll move on to item number nine on the agenda, which is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Motion by Gross, support by Griffith. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence is absent. Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
And Commissioner Griffin. Motion carries.
Item number 10 on the agenda are reports. Are there commissioners have any reports tonight that they want to share with their colleagues? Hearing none, I do have a report I would like to give. It's, it is really an honor to be the one to present this award. It's an employee recognition award from the third quarter of 2020. With us, joining us on Zoom is the recipient, Glenda, she goes by Gail, Gail Cook, and Jennifer Slater from our HR department. So Jennifer is going to be actually presenting the certificate. I, I wanted to share a little bit of insight about Gail Cook. She is an employee in our facility services department. She's a custodian at our East complex, has been with us for just a little bit over a year and a half. She was nominated by her peers for this employee recognition award. And I can see by some of the nomination, the comments, that she's an exemplary employee and really cares about the service she supplies to the county and the, and the passion for taking care of her fellow colleagues. Let me share just a few of the comments. And you'll, I think you'll heartily agree with me that Gail is a worthy, a very worthy recipient of this award. One nominee said, she does an excellent job keeping our building clean during the day. It's been cleaner than it has ever been. You'd think there were more people cleaning during the workday because of the exceptional job she does, especially keeping the bathrooms clean. Another fellow employee said, she does an amazing job keeping our building clean, always has a smile on her face, and a great attitude. She truly is a pleasure to have around and we are so thankful for what a great job she does keeping our, our building clean. And I want to share one more comment here. Before, during, and after COVID, she has supported us in any way she can with our needs in the WIC office. She has cleaned around us, helped us organize, and provided us with a daily dose of smile when we needed it. We are in week seventeen of this COVID chaos and she's still working harder than ever. An absolute joy to have her in our East complex. So I, it's truly my honor to be able to be the one to provide this recognition for Gail and I, I truly thank her on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. It is an award well received and we hope that you are with us for many more years.
So much. I hope to be here for a while too. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
You have, if you wanted to say a few words, you're welcome if, if that's okay.
I am amazed by this, absolutely. I, I enjoy working here. I love everybody that's here. They're all happy. We're like a big family. And it's just a joy to work here. You know, it's always good natured. No one's angry at anyone. We're, we're happy and we get along and we joke a little bit, but we get the job done. And it's, it's always been safety first for me. I want to keep everybody healthy. And when they're healthy, then I'm healthy too. So, but thank you so much for this award. I do appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Gail. Like I said, it's truly an honor. This is the fun part of the job of being chair. And so thank you for, for the job you've done and thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I had for reports. So we'll close out reports and move on to item number 11 on the agenda. And that's approval of consent agenda items. We have resolutions 2021-04-041 through 2021-04-049. I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Go move Plank.
Motion by Plank, support by Reader. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence is absent. Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 12 on the agenda are resolutions for consideration. We have four resolutions this evening for consideration. The first one is 2021-04-050. It's a resolution authorizing issuance of not to exceed $5.7 million limited tax general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021. Is there a motion?
Support Zajak.
Motion by Griffith, support by Zajak. You know, we chatted, do we have somebody that's going to address this with this? We covered this in finance quite a bit.
Right. Commissioner Nakagiri, I'm sorry, go ahead Nathan.
Good evening, everyone. This is a very good resolution. This is going to save us, we think, about $325,000 or so, basically refinancing the bond related to the EMS facility. So there was discussion on this in finance. This is a great opportunity for us to, we'd like to take a.
Thank you, Administrator Byrd. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Drick?
Thank you, Chair. Nathan, what's it going to cost us? I know the saving. What, what, what check is going to write to the attorneys or the finance people?
Cindy, do you have a fee breakdown what the cost is for this refinancing? Can you hear me, Cindy?
I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
The question was, what's it going to cost us? Do you, do we have a fee estimate on what the cost would be to process the refinancing?
We do not have a estimate. It depends on what the actual refinancing ends up being. It's based off of that and it is paid for from the refinancing itself. It does not cost the county anything out of pocket. We do not have the, the numbers. We won't know that until the actual bonds are sold.
Other questions, Commissioner Drick?
Thank you.
Questions from other commissioners? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Griffin.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence is absent. Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
And Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next resolution is resolution number 2021-04-051. It's a resolution to submit the estimated 2022 general fund budget to the allocation board. Is there a motion?
Move Zajak.
Lord Griffin.
Motion by Zajak with support by Griffith. Questions from commissioners? Just as a reminder, this is just an estimate to present. It's not the final budget, but it's our best guess as it is right now. Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence is absent. Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next resolution is resolution number 2021-04-052. It's a resolution to adopt the 2021 county equalization report as submitted with the accompanying statements. Is there a motion?
Go move Griffin.
Support Gross.
A motion by Griffith, support by Gross.
Before I get started, I would like to, I'd like to thank all the local units, the assessors, that went far and beyond their means this year to accommodate everybody, anybody that had a grievance against their assessment. They were able to use letter form, phonetic, virtual, or they could come in person. They exceeded themselves this year on everything. Not only that, everything has to be signed and we have a 10-day from the close of border review to get their stuff in. Two days after border review, we were inundated with 10 units. So they really exceeded what they were supposed to do. And with that, I'd like to say thank you to all the local units, assessors, and border review members that made this all possible this year. For this year, our assessments are $13,109,347,261, which is up about five and a half percent. Our taxable value increased this year 4.3%. I was a little off on my estimate. And that is $10,234,683,827. Those are the numbers I'd like you to adopt. We agree with the assessments, so I'm asking you to equalize as assessed.
Questions from commissioners? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Forgot my red button. Commissioner Griffin.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence is absent. Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
And Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The last resolution for the evening is resolution 2021-04-053, resolution authorizing amendment to the Livingston County Board of Commissioner 2021 rules. Is there a motion?
Move Zajak.
Motion by Zajak, support by Drick. As the author of the, of the rules change, I just, you know, I think everyone is probably familiar with this, but really the, the, the rule is, is put forward so that we have, as allowed by the Open Meetings Act, you have reasonable rules that you manage our meeting by, you know, the, the basic gist of this rule. As us view our meeting location both as virtual and, and physical, and that those, you know, either, you know, participating in either way, you get the full experience. You are desiring, if a citizen is desiring to meet in person, we encourage them to come early because sometimes our room is limited by Governor Whitmer's orders. But we all always have the Zoom feature as an overflow. You know, those that want to meet in person can. Those that want to meet remotely can. I think this is the best of all worlds for providing transparency to our citizens. Any questions from commissioners? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
No.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence is absent. Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 13 on the agenda is our last call to the public. Other, is there anybody in the public wishing to address the Board of Commissioners? If you're on Zoom, use the raise your hand feature or wave. If you're in the room here, just wave. We'll, we'll take call the public from people in the room. Yes. This is a reminder to provide your name and address.
Lori Leach, 9694 Heine, Brighton Township. Um, is this about being able to directly talk to one of the commissioners personally?
No, the, it's your opportunity to, you know, address the board. It's not intended to be a two-way conversation.
Right. I mean, as in, are we allowed to ask how, how they think about something or question anybody?
You can, you know, present your questions, but you, you won't get an answer and call the public. I would encourage you to email them, you know, specific commissioners.
Yeah, I have a couple few times and there was no response. So I have done that plenty of times. Okay, well, I just wanted to ask a couple of them a couple of questions, but I will email them again and I have copies of showing that I had emailed them and there is no return back. All right.
Thank you. Other citizens here in the meeting room? Hearing none, Cindy, how about in Zoom?
We do have one. WHMI is fake news. Has their hand raised?
Whoever is WHMI, you have the floor. I, are they unmuted, Cindy?
I have asked to unmute them. They are not unmuting themselves, Commissioner Nakagiri.
Okay. All right. I, I will conclude that they didn't wish to voice their opinion, that they used the Zoom title to say what they wanted to. So I'm going to go ahead and close.
Commissioner Nakagiri, we do have another raised hand from Shannon J.
Uh, go ahead.
Hello, Shannon Johnson, Brighton, Michigan. I just wanted to say that I think it's really unfortunate with the amount of pseudoscience and cherry picked data that's been shared tonight. The science is clear on masks from CDC and virtually all physicians, that they do work. They don't prevent the exchange of oxygen. They don't prevent, or they don't cause lung damage in children or adults. They don't cause brain damage in children or adults. They don't prevent oxygen being exchanged. They prevent respiratory droplets that can transmit COVID from being dispersed so widely. And I think the idea that we would go against what CDC recommends and what the State Health Department recommends as far as what is safe for our students is a huge misstep. I think that, like I said, the science is clear. Just because someone would still need to be quarantined if they were in a six-foot radius and wearing a mask doesn't mean that they are assumed as infectious. It means that in an abundance of precaution, they are in quarantine to make sure that we can prevent the, the transmission of the virus. There's been a number of studies that have shown that masks do work. Kansas last summer implemented a mask mandate where counties could opt out. And the counties that opted into the mask mandate and had that saw a decrease in cases over that time period, 6%, while counties that opted out of a mask mandate saw 100% increase in cases during that same exact time. So there's a number of studies that show masks work. If you are concerned about your child wearing a wet mask to, to school. If you are concerned about your child wearing a wet mask to, to school or having, you know, bacterial growth, then your child should be sent with an additional mask to change into, a dry mask that they can change part through the, partway through the day. There's no reason that we should be going against CDC guidance for this. In Michigan, we are seeing a huge expanse and explosion of variant cases that, you know, are much more transmissible. We've seen our cases in our zero to nineteen-year-old age groups quadruple in the past month and a half. The, the idea that we would walk back from these is putting all of our children at risk and putting us at risk as well. We have children coming down with multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, which is a condition associated with COVID infection, where children potentially may develop heart conditions because of this. And we've had over a hundred cases in Michigan of this in, in children. And of those kids, seventy percent were admitted to an ICU for the treatment of this. This is not something that is just an inconvenient issue to play around with. It is safety for our children and for the rest of us. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else out there, Cindy?
Commissioner Nakagiri, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the public and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, Helserman.
Motion by Helserman, supported by Griffith. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence is absent. Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
And Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Thank you. See you all later.